So I'm Tina Marquez and I'm an outgoing school board member. And thank you so much for meeting with us. We've been trying to do a better job meeting with all of the city councils in the Boulder Valley School District and appreciate your time so that we can continue to share what all of the good work each of our groups are doing and how we can partner where it makes sense. So I thought we would start with introductions over here on the school board side and our staff and then if you could go through introductions, that would be great. Again, I'm Tina Marquez. I've been on the board for eight years and I have just two more meetings left, including this one. So Kathy. Sorry.
I'm logging in. There we go. I'm Kathy Gephardt. I'm the vice president of the board. Really nice to be able to see all of you. Thank you.
Lisa Sweeney Moran, District A.
Good evening. Richard Garcia, District G, Lafayette, Erie, and a little part of Louisville.
Kitty Sargent, Board Treasurer. I'm in District F, which is Southern Superior and Broomfield.
Hi, I'm Stacey Ziss, District D, which is mostly North Boulder.
Okay, and then we have Rob. You know Rob.
Good evening, everyone. Rob Anderson, proud superintendent of the Boulder Valley School District and proud resident of Louisville, Colorado. So thank you all so much for your service. It's so great to get a chance to meet with you all this evening and share some of the updates from the district and to have conversation. Thanks so much for making this a priority and when I know is a very busy year for you all as well as us.
All right, Louisville.
Thank you for those great introductions. I'm Ashley Stolzmann. I'm the mayor of Louisville. Great to meet with everyone tonight and I'll turn it over to Mayor Pro Tem Maloney to introduce himself.
Well, there was a nice introduction right there. So I'm Dennis Maloney. I'm the mayor pro tem. I also am one of the representatives for Ward Three, which is the southern part of Louisville. And I will hand it off to the next picture I can see, Caleb Dickinson.
Hello, Caleb Dickinson, City of Louisville, City Council Ward One and proud alumni of University Hill, Flatirons Elementary School, Baseline Middle School, and Fairview High School.
And so if we could go to Ward Two, Councilmember Fahy.
Thank you. Yes, Deb Fahy, City Council Ward Two, Louisville. And I am not an alum of Boulder Valley Schools, but all four of my children are from elementary school all the way through the university in Boulder. So, thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Fahy. And Councilmember Brown, finish us off with Ward Three.
Thank you, Mary. Yes, wonderful to meet with all of you. I'm Kyle Brown, council member from Ward Three, proud alumni of Coal Creek Elementary School, Fireside Elementary School, Louisville Middle School, and Fireside, or sorry, Fairview High School, excuse me. I grew up in Louisville. So it turns out.
Thank you. That's our city council and I'll hand it to Megan Davis, our city manager, to introduce herself.
Good evening, board members and city council. I'm Megan Davis. I'm the interim city manager here at the city of Louisville. And I'll just mention, we've got a few other staff members here. We have our police chief, Dave Hayes. We have our library and museum services director, Sharon Nemeczek. Our interim deputy city manager, Rob Sue Carroll.
Thank you very much. That's everyone on our side. I'll turn it back over to you, Tina.
Okay, thanks so much. All right, so we sent you an agenda and if you're okay, we'll just go in order, but I invite you at any time to interrupt and say, you know what, we're running out of time. Could we skip over to this or skip to questions or something like that? You know, so we have, we can answer these in a lot of different ways, so I want to make sure we're doing what's most valuable to you and to your constituents. So we were going to start with a quick summary of our strategic plan. So Rob, that's all you.
Randy, are you forwarding the slides for me?
Yes.
Trouble checking. Okay. So just a quick overview, council members, to give you an update on kind of what's been going on this year. I want to talk to you a little bit about, about the return to school this year, the five days a week that we've been returned since August. Talk to you a little bit about our Altogether for All Students strategic plan. Introduce some of the members of our team or at least share with you, members of our team who are, who are BVSD liaisons that would be supporting citizens in the city of Louisville. Our board will walk you through our legislative platform and then we can give you a bit of an update on enrollment, on how our enrollment trends are looking in the city and then open, open the floor up to any questions or, or any other conversations that you all might like to have. So it's hard to believe that this was just a few short months ago. We are very proud of the mitigation efforts that we've put in place to make sure that we return all students back to in-person learning five days a week. That's been our number one priority in addition to the priorities here for our back-together BVSD plan, making sure that we're taking care of our kids, maximizing student academic growth and achievement, providing supports to teachers and staff and to students as we come back and then making sure that, that we're operationally and financially viable as we return back to in-person learning. I will say that since the beginning of the year, we've had very low transmission within schools. We've been back five days a week. That was our main priority. We know and understand the hardship that it caused last year by not being able to run in-person school and so we wanted to make sure that we did whatever we needed to do entering this school year to make sure that kids were in-person and were learning. We've got, you know, multiple levels of layered health precautions, ventilation, we have air filtration systems in all of our schools and all of our large spaces, regular cleaning, mask requirements under Boulder County Public Health Order K-12 and adults, of course, hand washing, physical distancing to the extent we can do that, seating charts, stable groups and trying to really get outside. It's been a wonderful fall for that. We've had lots of really nice weather. That's really helped us. I mean, just reminding folks, if you're sick, stay home and trying to work with families, kids, especially with allergies. We want to make sure that kids that we know have allergies are, that they're missing lots and lots of school. Again, our priority is to get all of our, our students into school as, as much as possible. We have been doing pretty significant testing. We have community testing sites at Centaurus High School, right down, right down the road there on South Boulder, open nine to five Monday through Friday, open to not only our staff, but our entire community. We've been doing mobile testing sites for staff and students. We've been testing about 6,000 staff and students every two weeks, which as of last week was more than, than I think the entire state's binax testing program. We have really, really great buy-in in our community. This is optional. It is not mandatory. Students and staff are able to sign up and we do PCR tests, you know, once every two weeks for all those that are signed up. And anybody who's interested and has kids in our system, go to BVSD.org backslash COVID testing and you can sign up as well. So, you know, the, so in event, I'll pause there if there are any questions from council in regards to the mitigation efforts, strategies, and what we're seeing in our schools in regards to managing the pandemic.
I don't see any hand raises on our hand. Dr. Anderson, thank you.
I will say, just a huge shout out to all of our, our teachers and administrators and support staff in the district. It's been certainly an enormous effort to make sure that, that we maintain schools five days a week and so wanted to thank all of our, all of our employees that are helping support us to do that. So with that, we'll jump into our strategic plan and give you a brief overview of our Altogether for All Students strategic plan. When I started as superintendent in 2018, I started with a hundred day listening and learning tour where I actually spent time in nine different, I had nine different community meetings and went to every single school and tried to discern from those meetings what was going well, what are opportunities for us to improve. Based on that, we looked at the research and the data that was relevant to BVSD and developed through that process, a very collaborative process, our Altogether for All Students strategic plan. Three main things that we're hoping for all students. We want to ignite their learning, equip them to be successful, and have them soar when they leave us. We want to ignite students' learning by making sure that all kids benefit from challenging and relevant educational opportunities. We know that in the Boulder Valley School District, there has been disparities in achievement for decades and we, and we're committed to making sure that we narrow those, those, those achievement gaps and growth gaps that we see. And we also know that when students leave BVSD, we want them ready for what it is that they want to do with their life. We want them to be able to reach their goals and dreams and for many students, that's college, but we also have students who may want to go right into the workforce or, or pursue some, some types of technical certifications and we feel like all those are really, really important things that we need to consider as we make sure that students are successful once they leave us. And so ignite, equip, soar. These are the three big areas of our strategic plan. To, to be able to do that, we've taken 13 initiatives, strategic initiatives, and aligned them to the following four themes: challenging and relevant education, challenging, engaging and relevant instruction, making sure that we have a positive and inclusive culture for our students and staff, customized support, so we're providing all kids what exactly what it is that they need to be successful, and then making sure that we're partnering with our community through community and family partnerships. And so within each of these themes, we have 13 initiatives that we've been hard at work implementing over the past several years to make, to start to see some of these changes happen within our system. This is just a slide. If you look at the, in the middle there, it's, that's articles from 2006. BVSD tackles the achievement gap. Just to highlight and emphasize that this has been an ongoing problem and so we know we've needed to make some, some significant changes within our systems, our, we're calling it our instructional infrastructure to support our teachers so they can support our kids because we know that to be the very best school district we can be, I mean, we're one of the finest school districts in the state of Colorado, but to be one of the best school districts in the nation, we don't just want excellence for some, we want excellence for all. Each and every kid that goes to any of our schools within our system deserves the right to be successful and be able to soar after they leave us and we're very committed to making sure that we're closing and narrowing these gaps in achievement and growth. So this slide's a little wonky. You probably can't read it. These are the 13 initiatives and we have been hard at work implementing things as, you know, making sure that we prioritize standards for kids, that we have strong instructional practices for our teachers, that we're training our leaders, that we're making sure that we're being culturally responsive as we develop a system of supports for kids in buildings. We last, during our last budget cycle, we implemented a weighted differentiated funding model to make sure our schools that needed more resources were able to have that. We've been studying and implementing return on investment to make sure that we're being good stewards of our taxpayers' dollars. Strengthening the school-family connections is ongoing work. This year, we've, we've shifted and have really started focusing on managing our partnerships, both existing and future partnerships. And then as we, as we move forward, making sure that we're culturally responsive all throughout our organization, from our teaching and learning to our practices for our staff, making sure that, that we're hiring more teachers and leaders of color to be more representative of the students. We have the honor to serve. And then, and then ultimately, and this is an initiative that's forthcoming, making sure that we're really taking care of the wellness of our people. So lots and lots of work happening each and every day here in BVSD. If you are interested in some of the work in regards to equity, I know that in, in looking at your city's website, that you've got a major focus on equity, diversity, and inclusion and I think that our priorities line up very well together there. You can go to BVSD.org backslash equity and learn about some of the, some of the more in-depth work we're doing. We're calling it excellence through equity because again, we don't feel like that we can be excellent unless we're equitable. So, that was a lot. I talked a little fast and I'm wearing a mask, so I'm going to pause and I'm going to see if there are any questions around strategic plan or if there's any follow-up that you'd like from our staff to get more information for council members.
Councilmember Fahy.
Thank you. Yes, I want to first say that I think what you've got in your plan is wonderful. I'm especially interested in, in your EDI efforts. I've also been discussing with a couple of people the importance of vocational and technical education rather than only encouraging advanced degrees. It's, it's wonderful if someone wants to go on for an advanced degree of some kind, but I personally, for example, if I'm building a house, I don't care if you have a doctorate degree in, in medicine or something, I want to know if you can put in the electricity properly and safely. And that's learned in a technical school, not in a university. And so I like the emphasis on, on those kinds of job trainings. We also have a shortage and hiring issues with trades in the area, not only in Louisville, but all across the country right now. So I really enjoy hearing about that. The other thing I'm interested in, and I don't know if it's going to be addressed at any point further into the discussion, but there's been a lot of discussion about the lack of school bus drivers, another, I guess, trade job. So my suggestion or, or thought would be, could we somehow come up with a plan to incentivize the students, particularly the high school and maybe the middle school students, to ride bicycles to school, even promote an EV bike program so that they can get back and forth to school safely without needing a bus or a ride with their parents or a carpool. So those, those are my concerns. Well, thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you, Councilmember Fahy. Councilmember Dickinson.
Thank you, Mary. Yes, I guess a little bit of a two-part question. One is, I'm coming at this question more as a parent of an eighth grader, pardon me, but um, it, I have this sense that the high schools are starting to get, or have become a little bit more focused on different areas. And I, when I, when I grew up, right, you went to the school that was in your community and I think in a large part, that's still the same thing, but I do hear a lot of students as we talk to other parents and things, you know, picking schools because of the programs that they have and, and you know, we're going to Fairview for this, we're going to Centaurus for that. And I think in some ways, that's just absolutely fantastic, but this, so one is, is that accurate at all or is that just perception? And then two, if it's accurate, what, what are our strategies for allowing that mobility for kids who find it difficult to go to, you know, schools outside their, you know, neighborhood where they can walk and bike to? So if, if Centaurus really is the school for X, and I'm not going to say anything specific, but if that's the best school for X, how does a kid from North Boulder who really wants that, you know, direction get to Centaurus? And what are, what are the tools we have? And so that first part of the question's important. If that, is that not how you guys feel, then maybe the second part doesn't matter.
Dr. Anderson.
Great question. And I would say that we do have a robust set of choices for students through our open enrollment program that, that many of our students take advantage of. I would say that schools have been in the past, given the opportunity to offer specialized programs. So at Centaurus, they have the IB program. At Fairview, they have the IB program. Those are the only two high schools within our district where we offer IB. And so if you wanted to earn an international baccalaureate diploma or take those courses, you would have to go to one of those schools. I know that Centaurus has a very, very popular engineering program. I know that, that Boulder High has, and Monarch and Broomfield have more of a traditional kind of community school offering, but then some kids find those schools very great fits. I don't have a great answer on how do we ensure that all schools can get to the school that matches their fit? So we offer comprehensive programming in all of our schools. I think that kids can get a robust set of electives. My kids go to Monarch High and they're getting a great education. They have lots of electives and opportunities from business to engineering, but we do have these specialized programs. Unfortunately, at this point in time, for students to be able to access those programs, they have to provide their own transportation at the high school level. So hopefully that answers your program. It's not solely, we offer this program only at one school. Some schools, I mean, I think that the difference there is, is the IB programming, but all those schools offer concurrent enrollment opportunities, advanced placement opportunities, and those are pretty consistent throughout the district.
Yeah, I appreciate that answer. I think I just find it, again, to be, you know, I find my family to be in a position of privilege where our daughter's kind of thinking openly about every school and why she might want to go to this, that, the other, and we might have the resources, time, ability to kind of let her pick and choose the right environment for her. And I agree entirely that all your schools are just amazing. And so it isn't about a kid, you know, being stuck at a bad school. They're, they're all just phenomenal schools and phenomenal teachers, but I do think it's probably an interesting dilemma to, to think about, you know, transportation for kids to, to, you know, an engineering student to access Centaurus or, or, you know, I think that the arts department of Fairview is still top in the country, so you know, if that's something that someone's interested in who lives in Louisville, you know, creating, creating those opportunities with transportation would be, be great. But thank you for your answer.
Thank you, Councilmember Dickinson. I don't see any other hands on the topic, so I think we can move to the next one.
Wonderful. Great question. Thank you all so much for, for the dialogue. Our next slide here, Randy. So as we think about the way that we've organized our supports for schools, for parents and for students, we've organized our district into three support networks: the East Support Network, the Northwest Support Network, and the Southwest Support Network. So the, the schools in Louisville, go to the previous slide, Randy, these are our schools that are in the Southwest Network schools. And so our executive director is, is Michelle DeBerry. And so she, if there's, if there's an issue at a school, if a, if a parent has an issue, and I encourage all parents who have challenges or questions or things that they need to discuss to contact their teacher first. If the issue isn't resolved, then contact their principal. And at that point, if their principal is unable to resolve their issue and they still need support, to move that to our executive director of, for the Southwest Network, which her name is Michelle DeBerry, will, will follow up council members with her contact information. And also, as, as a council, I just want to, if, if you are, if, if our, our citizens in Louisville engage you on issues with our school, I'd encourage you to reach out to me directly. I'll make sure that it gets to the appropriate staff member on our team to make sure that there's proper follow-up and that we, that we address the issues that parents bring forward. And then I make sure that I circle back with council members so you know and understand that there's been follow-up and follow-through, just as, as a partnership to make sure that as council members, you will get concerns regarding our schools and want to make sure that you know that you can send those directly to me. You don't have to worry about sending those to anybody else, send those to me. And then I'll, I will cer, I will make sure that those issues are addressed by staff and I'll circle back with you with how we resolve those issues. Any questions before we move towards our legislative platform?
No questions. Thank you very much, Dr. Anderson, and thank you for your responsiveness. We experienced that, that exactly what you laid out for the plan on how we'll communicate with each other on the school busing issue. So thank you for fielding those questions from community members and for following through to make sure council knew that you'd followed up on each one. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. For our legislative platform, I'm going to turn it over to our board president, Tina Marquez, to discuss our legislative platform.
Yeah, and this is really quick. It's a little early for us because we haven't finalized our legislative platform, but I just wanted to share in general that we do a lot of advocacy at the, with our state legislators and then we do a little bit of advocacy at the federal level. Some of our main themes have been increased funding for special education and then increased funding overall in general. Just to kind of understand where we're coming from, we prefer dollars not to be earmarked because we recognize that every district in Colorado has different needs and may have found different ways to fund different projects or found partners. So you won't see us necessarily lobbying for specific funding bills, but for general funding bills so that we can apply the money where we have the greatest need at that time. So that's kind of what our advocacy looks like. And this year, we haven't gotten very involved. We did pass a resolution in opposition to Proposition 119 and that was our primary resolution for this election cycle. And as you know, we do not have a mill levy or a bond being considered at this time. So that would be another area where we get pretty, we might get engaged in terms of, you know, sharing information and communicating what that funding might be used for. So those are our primary, that's our legislative platform. And always if you're, you know, looking to do something and want to get our input, we'd love to hear it. Any questions about that?
We do not have any questions. Thank you for that update. Oh, it looks like we have one. I apologize, Mayor Pro Tem Maloney. I was looking for virtual hands, not real ones.
Yeah, I was stumbling finding my virtual hands, so I just used my real one. Thank you for the, the update and I have a couple of questions. You mentioned 119. Could you, could you kind of share with us why the board has the position that they have for 119?
Yeah, I'm going to let Rob does that. He, he talks about that. He does a pretty, pretty great job describing that.
Okay, thank you.
So about a month ago, our board took a position to oppose Proposition 119 along with most of the large education organizations across the state. The Association for Superintendent School Board Members and teachers' unions stayed neutral on this. I think that the way that, if you're seeing the ads that I'm seeing on TV, that, that this is being proposed is the solution to close the achievement gap with free tutoring. I think that we have serious concerns over the mechanics on how which kids, especially kids in poverty, are going to be able to access those tutoring dollars. You know, in, in, we've heard from, from several folks and it hurt mixed, you know, mixed thoughts on this, but the prevailing thought is that it's a reimbursable expense for a family in poverty. So a family in poverty has to then front $1,500 for tutoring and then wait to get paid back. And as someone who grew up in poverty, I promise you, we didn't have $1,500 laying around. If any extra dollar we had was, was putting food on the table or paying bills or keeping the lights on. So I think that there's, there's a mechanical issue with how, how folks would get paid. Furthermore, for those of you who have kids and maybe you've had a tutor, you realize how, how few hours of tutoring you actually can get for $1,500. So if this is designed to close the achievement gap, it should be way more than $1,500. Kids, the research on tutoring is pretty clear. 50 to 100 hours of tutoring is what you would need to even begin to make a dent in that. And then there's some issues around governance where this, this pot of 100-plus million dollars, which would take money out of public land trust and then taxing marijuana, would then be, be under the oversight of a nine-person board, of which are appointed by the governor, but then there's no public opportunity to weigh in on who's on that board, who should be on the board, balance of, balance of voices on that board, like you would have for a state board of education, a city council, school board, takes all of that oversight away. I mean, I think those are three of the biggest issues, not to mention trying to manage the providers that would then provide, provide these services within, within this bill. When you get into the details, this nine-person committee would have a budget larger, larger than the Colorado Department of Education. Right? So we think that, we think that closing achievement gaps is a worthwhile problem. We don't think this is the way to solve it. We know that public schools are underfunded and we know that, that there's better solutions out there, so we have, we have, we are a firm no on Proposition 119.
Thank you, Rob. You know, one of the things that you mentioned was the, the number of hours that you could get for $1,500 for tutoring. One of my younger brothers, who's a retired teacher down in Texas, actually works for his same school district as a tutor full-time. And so I know that he spends a lot more than 15 or 20 hours with a student over the course of a year, so thank you, so thank you for that. My second question, and this may be premature and please tell me if it is, but you talked about there's, you're not really looking at any mill levies or, or bond issues, but were you talking about for 2022? So for the, a year from now election? Because I know there's not one now on the ballot. So is there anything prospect that you would be looking at in the future?
We have, we have not discussed anything in the future yet. So we're just wrapping up our last bond.
All right. Thank you for answering my questions.
You bet.
Any other council members have questions? All right, I don't see any.
Let's, let's head on to our next topic, Randy. Are we? Let's talk a little bit about enrollment. So we have probably more slides than you'd need to see on this, but I'm going to walk you through these anyways. And I'll make sure that I'm hopefully reading these correctly. I'm going to look at in our audience here, Rob or others, if I'm misstating something, please flag me down. We're in 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 Boulder Valley in general, we're in a a state of declining enrollment, where we were stable for many years, increasing for many years. So we're in a slight decline here in enrollment. And then there's also a slight decline in the number of residents. And this is specific for the city of Louisville. Next slide. When you look at our high school enrollment, our high school enrollment, again, slight declines and our high school parents and residents have stayed a little bit more stable. And I think that I think it was Councilmember Dickinson who talked about the potential for students maybe open enrolling to schools outside of Louisville, which the Monarch High School would be the only high school that sits in Louisville. That may may be the cause for some of those enrollment declines at the high school that students were choosing a a close or one of our other open enrollment high schools. Middle schools are about the same. And so the enrollment and and enrollment in our middle schools is is about the same, just a slight kind of decline and then and then flattening out. And elementary school, as you can see, our enrollment is is much lower than than residents, and that's been on a slight decline as well, although I'm trying to 2021 and 2122 is have have really kind of flattened out. We took a we took a bit of a dip there during the pandemic year. And this is a comparison of the population of students 18 and under for Louisville and Superior. And so Louisville has a larger population. But again, you can see between two night 2019 and 2020, you could see that slight decline. And then these are the numbers of open enrolled students that we accept from outside of the school district to our Louisville and Superior schools. And so you can see middle schools on an up or yeah, elementary schools slightly downturn, middle school upturn, high school downturn. And I'm going to have to take a second to read this one. Pretty detailed. So the students per household profiled by that's too much. Rob, you want to get you want it? You want to give me a helping hand here? Rob Price is our Assistant Superintendent of Operations who helps oversee enrollment. All right. So we're going to pass on this slide. I'm sure there's lots of great information. We could follow up with you. I I think this what's that? Tina's got it. I'm I am so sorry. For President Marcus.
Okay, I so this is just showing that the number of students per household is declining over time, which probably mirrors a national trend as families get smaller. So I I think that's how I'm reading this. If that makes sense. Is that how everyone else is reading it? Oh, okay. Strike that. The newer the house, the more students you have in the house. The older the house, the fewer there are. Thank you. All right. And so and and I love talking about enrollment with city councils. It's one of my favorite topics because it just gives an idea of where we're heading together as a community. And also understanding how you develop housing really impacts enrollment for the district. So for instance, when you develop stacked housing, we get a very, very low yield of students. But when you develop townhomes duplexes and triplexes, we get a higher yield of students. So when we think about just what kind of housing does attract people with children, that's kind of what we've seen over the time. And our demographer is fantastic at giving more information about what kind of housing will create what kind of community. He's his ability to forecast the yield of students is extraordinary. So if you ever have a question about that, if you if you're evaluating development, it's terrific. And he's usually in touch with everyone on your staff as well, from what I have seen in the past. So so that so questions for Rob?
Thank you. And we have a few years back spent quite a lot of time with your demographer coming to our council meetings. So we're familiar with his work and the one, you know, thing that doesn't really show from the slides is that there may be variation by school within our within our city. So the three elementary schools have different types of housing around them, and there's been different levels of development associated with the different schools. And so we have in some schools had issues where there are not enough students. And then in other schools, we've had concerns in the past from parents that there's overcrowding and, you know, that the the but that the feeling at the school is degraded because of the crowding issues. So I'm not sure that it's a consistent experience across our three elementary schools, although I do think a number of parents have opted out of the schools and that has resolved some of the problem there. And they've opened enrolled into other BDSM schools. So it's kind of self adjusted. Councilmember Fahey?
Yes, thank you. My question has to do, oh, sorry about the phone. My question has to do with other schools. So has the has okay, first, has BVDS BDSM got any information on demographics or percentages of students in the area who are attending private schools or students who are being homeschooled? And was that changed because of COVID? I know I have a daughter who decided to homeschool her son because of COVID. Is that something that's common? And and has that reduced the numbers of attendees?
So I don't have a report in front of me. I do believe we do a private school report. I'm looking at staff. I I would say that that your their intuition is correct, though. Councilmember Fahey, that we have certainly last year, we saw a loss of enrollment of about 1,500 students and heard anecdotally through learning pods popping up, home schools, and then in in enrollment in private school. We did see a number of those students return. I don't think that all of those students returned. And then that would just be, we'll have to watch that over time. We also think that there's an interesting, they call it a red shirting of kindergarteners. So parents not sending their kindergarteners and and and, you know, waiting to try to get to a more normal year. And so we believe that that's happening as well. You know, we have faith in our schools, the quality of our schools that that hopefully folks will inevitably come back. And that may start with kindergarten years or start at middle school, start at high school, depending on the situation. So I don't have a report for you, but I would say based on everything I've heard and what I know that your intuition is correct.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the the board for meeting with us, you know, and I kind of wanted what we talked about tonight. And so this is a topic I I wasn't aware that I was going to ask a question about, but next Monday will be our our city council meeting. And one of our topics that's on our agenda is the our EDI task force is going to bring recommendations from their work that they've done over the course of the last year. And Rob, you talked about, you know, your equity, things that are going on. What struck me is how do we how do we make best use of our collective resources in addressing some of these issues? And I'm not not sure there's a really great answer right now, but it would be something we would want, we would want to share those recommendations with you. So if we can find where there's commonality, where we could address some of them in a in a common way, I think that would be best for both the city and the school district. So so I don't think I'm really asking a question as much as making a statement. But, you know, I I hope that our recommendations can be folded into the things that we collectively do. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Maloney. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I I wanted to ask a quick follow up. I know that the what Councilmember Fahey was asking about, which is I wanted to, I know that since the pandemic, a lot of parents may have opted for Boulder Universal, and I don't even know if Boulder Universal was available prior to the pandemic. But maybe you could speak just a little bit about the uptake of that particular program and whether, you know, you've seen a lot of families move over to that in in the wake of the pandemic.
Councilmember Brown, great question. Yes. So we have always had an online school called Boulder Universal. The model pre pandemic was so asynchronous instruction, meaning that students a bit self paced with oversight from a teacher. And then the opportunity to come in for small group support and instruction at our 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 brick and mortar facility that supported Boulder Universal. Through the pandemic, we've moved now to where we have two online types of experience for parents that have been very popular. We have Boulder Universal, which is is this asynchronous model. And then this year, we have BU Link, which is an asynchronous model, meaning that students show up online, like they show up to a class each and every day. There's a live teacher and there's live online interaction similar to what we're doing here. And so we have had pretty, not, I mean, if you hold on one second, what's it? Bill, what's our enrollment in in Boulder Universal and BU Link? Do you have that? Yep. So 533 students in Boulder Universal. It was about 1,000 last year. So so interest has as students have been able to access five days a week in person learning in their home schools, they've been able to return to do that. And then I say we have a couple hundred in BU Link. Again, I think these are and and what we've tried to do special with BU Link is keep those kids connected to their home schools as best as possible. So if you go to Louisville Elementary and you're in BU Link, we make sure that you're connected with school announcements, so on and so forth, so you can stay connected to those communities. We just recognized that we had parents and families who just until this pandemic, until there's, you know, our community, our country has a better handle on that, did not feel comfortable sending their kids in person. And we wanted to make sure that we provided a viable opportunity for them to stay with us and also get great education. And so that's a great question. I think that we'll continue to have Boulder Universal. This, as it stands, is the last year of BU Link. But then again, if you'd asked me what the pandemic was going to look like in late October, in July, I wouldn't have thought where we are where we are right now. So we reserve the right to continue to extend that to the extent that there's a need in our community.
If I can ask a follow up, Mayor. They I really appreciate that answer. That's that's very helpful. I wanted to ask particularly a question about the late start Wednesdays that have been rolled out this week, this 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 year. Wanted to to sort of, I know there were some concerns from parents about the impact on, you know, just having, you know, for elementary school, you're starting at almost nine and then for, you know, older kids, you're starting at almost 10. Puts a puts a unique burden on parents. I know there's school, there's childcare options available. We certainly appreciate that. Would would be interested in sort of how that, how you all are sort of measuring the effectiveness of that particular initiative and maybe an explanation of of sort of why maybe that late start is is necessary for your staff.
Those those are great questions. And so prior to last year, we had some schools that had late starts and other schools that didn't. And for the schools that had late starts, I know that Monarch High had one late start. I'm not sure about the other schools in Louisville. But we we saw an inconsistency. And in talking with our teachers and our staff on on making the changes and improvements to the instructional practices that we need, making sure they're meeting the needs of each and every kid. It was very apparent that we needed to carve out some professional learning time that was consistent for our teachers across the district. And so we know and understand what a sacrifice this this is for our families. And we didn't bring this recommendation to our board lightly. I will say that we've really tried to make sure that any parent or family who did need supervision, that we were able to provide that if they were able to get to their kids to our schools earlier. So I know that in addition to the typical childcare that you have to pay for, we also did deploy staff in schools for those who just wanted to have somebody to be able to to stay with their kids, to let them do homework and things Wednesday mornings, especially at the elementary school level. And so we're going to be measuring, I think, the the measuring the effects of this by the by the amounts of training that we're able to provide, which we certainly anticipate will it will lead to improved outcomes and closed achievement gaps. I think it's going to take a couple of years to be able to to justly see the see the 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 impact on our outcomes. I think that what we'll be able to measure first is just the the fidelity of implementation, looking through, making sure that the teachers were receiving their proper training and that they've been building their skills. And then over time, those skills translating to better outcomes for students. So great question. It's something that we continue to to monitor. But I can tell you that as I go to all of our schools and have been going to schools for the past three years, our teachers are so thankful to this community for supporting this and getting behind this so they can get the professional development and time they need with their colleagues to make sure they're taking care of our kids.
Cool. Thank you.
Do you notice you're muted, Mayor?
I did not. I had just finished saying there were no hands and then you raised your hand.
I was, that was my mute button, trying to tell you you're muted. There's lots of phone over here on Zoom.
All right. I don't see any other hands from council members.
Okay, well, I think the next sorry about that. I think the next was just open questions from city council. Do I have that right?
Yeah, it looks like we have about 13 minutes for any any open questions for board members or city council members to to ask. And and if we run out of time, we could always set up another meeting and and we can always meet with staff. Really would love to follow up on Councilmember Maloney's idea around how do we link up some of the work you all are doing in on in equity, diversity, inclusion, and some of the the massive efforts we're doing in the school system, because I think that there would be some opportunities for synergy there.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. There are a few topics I know are ongoing topics between staff members at the district and our staff. I don't think they're right for a grand discussion tonight, but I'll just lay them out on the table. It's things that we as a city are our staff are looking forward to continuing a dialogue around. And those topics are school resource officers, transportation and getting students to improve school safely, and then just our intergovernmental agreements around ball fields and things like that, joint use of things like the city pool. So I don't think any of those topics are right for a grand discussion, but we appreciate the partnerships and all of those things. And I think the staff will continue to flesh out those topics offline. And when things are right for our conversation back at the board and council level, then we'll have that conversation. Is there other questions and comments? We should ask them now. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Hey, I I wanted to talk a little bit about you, Superintendent Anderson, I know you mentioned in particular the EDI work of the of Louisville. I think we're very proud of the being able to put together a task force that's making recommendations next week and then to be able to move forward with implementing those recommendations. I want to specifically ask you about how you all are supporting not only equity and diversity inclusion, but specifically supporting LGBTQIA youth who are particularly at risk for or, you know, suicide and other sort of terrible outcomes. I want to I want to sort of talk through how, you know, I would love to be able to partner with you as a city to create a very inclusive community for for youth who identify as LGBTQIA and just talk a little bit more with you about that. So I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about some of the programs and the way that you support youth now. But I would love to to continue that conversation going forward. In particular, I think for our trans youth, they need it, the there's a there's an important level of support that the schools can provide and appreciate the the sort of inclusive environment that you provide for folks. So I'll just throw that out there and hope that hope that we can continue to have a nice dialogue about that.
That that is, that sounds wonderful. I I will say that it's it's certainly a point of pride for our district that if you look at the policies that this board has passed and supported over years, we have some of the strongest policies to support transgender students in the entire country. I think that as as I have made in the entire country. I think that as I have made my way around this community, all 500 square miles of it, I've constantly run into to parents of transgender youth who moved here to BVSD because they know of our policies and the lengths we go to to support our transgender students, all of our LGBTQIA students. We know and understand the environment that we have to have to protect them. So we would I'd love further discussion. Certainly, we can have our staff provide more information on all the things that we do, that our schools individually, we have school space programs, and we have district-based supports programs. I will say that for all of our youth, that we've made very significant investments over the past year to increase our supports for mental health. We actually had a board work session on that a couple of weeks ago. We'd happy to be share with you. But this is an important topic for us, I know, as a board and as a school district, and love to hear that the city of Lewisville would love to partner and make sure that we're just providing the great supportive, safe environment for our kids. That's wonderful to hear.
And I'll just add one thing that in in February will be the 10 year anniversary from when we did pass the policy, which is actually an exhibit, I think it's ECAR or something like that, about transgender youth. And we were, I think, the first district in the country to do so. So I encourage you to look up that policy, because it's a pretty exciting milestone for our district and the inclusiveness of our district.
Thank you very much. And just thank you for your work on that. And, you know, it doesn't it doesn't go unnoticed. But I just wanted to, you know, extend our willingness to work with you to continue to create that very inclusive community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Dickinson?
Thank you, Mayor. I was hoping I could get a little education on what the current district wide dress code policy is, or what the conversation is right now on, you know, sort of that conversation. I know that's been here in Lewisville, there was a protest at at the middle school around this issue. And I know that historically speaking, dress codes have tended to be both sexist and racist and overall problematic. And I think it's very complicated. And I know educators are trying really hard to have a good functioning classroom in school to, you know, focus on education and not have the dress of anyone be, you know, quote unquote, distracting. But I know that's been a really interesting subject, kind of to piggyback off of Councilman Brown's comments. I'm just wondering, where are we right now on on that conversation from a school district perspective?
So I heard about those protests as well, as I had a student at the middle school at the time. You'd be very proud of the actions of this board. We've totally revamped our school dress code. We'd be happy to share that with you to be more inclusive, to make sure that that we're being more respectful. You know, we I don't know that the last time we had addressed the the dress code, it had been a long, it was way outdated. And so I'm happy to share with you all the new updated dress code. And I think that at least the students in my neighborhood were super thankful that we made we made those adjustments. And so I'm happy to share that with you all. But we've made great progress. The board heard the concerns, put those concerns into action with a new revised, more supportive and inclusive policy.
Well, yeah, I appreciate that. I don't know if you noticed, but I was a high school teacher for several years. And I know that, you know, one, one thing that I was never comfortable with was enforcing the dress code that, you know, I didn't feel like I was in a position to tell people what they could or couldn't wear. And that's really tough for a lot of our teachers now, especially, you know, as people are going through what they're going through in in their, yeah, in their lives and trying to express themselves in the way they want to be expressed. So I appreciate you guys taking the time. And I'll I'll take a look at that. It was one of those things that came up right now and just admitting my ignorance that I don't I don't know where we where we landed on that or what what's been happening more generally. So I'd appreciate that update. And then my other comment is just, you know, this is mostly to you, Superintendent, is, you know, how are we comparing to the school districts around us for, you know, everything from class size to funding per child to the age of our buildings and technology and and, you know, time of the season, if some districts had to go, you know, four days a week prior to the pandemic, just because of funding. And so I'm just curious, you know, what the discrepancy is throughout the area, not just within, you know, Boulder Valley, but our neighbors.
That's a pretty, pretty broad question. I would say that that from a fiscal standpoint, that we have done a really good job, you know, staying within our means. We have very competitive compensation. I believe our teachers make on average more than any other district in the state of Colorado. I know that that that's something that's been a priority of our district to make sure we take care of our great people. As a result, we have very low turnover, which is one of the biggest hidden costs in a school district. If you're replacing 20% of your of your workforce every year, the cost that you would invest in that versus just paying people what they what they deserve to earn as teachers, I feel like we've really definitely gotten that right. I think that our last bond program, which is wrapping up, has been a huge success. I think that board or Councilmember Maloney in asking, you know, what are we thinking about in the future bond? We haven't had that discussion, but we have started a facility assessment to see where we are, where our facilities, where are we going to potentially need improvements in the future? And that's ongoing. In regards to class size, I think it's just school and school dependent. I think that we have a lot of smaller schools compared to maybe some other districts. So not necessarily class size, but just more schools and community, especially at the elementary school level. But I think overall that we compare very favorably in most categories with our surrounding school districts and school districts across the state.
Appreciate it.
And thank you, Councilmember Fahy. If you have a very brief question, you'll be the last one, and then we have to have to log off.
Okay, I'll try to go really quick. I'm just wondering what the policy is for the in school police presence and counselors for all of the different issues that have already been mentioned for mental illness, for the EDI issues, everything?
So if you are free in 10 minutes, you can tune in. We'll be providing our board actually an update on where we are in that process that that talks about how we're, you know, the resources that our board and our district are committing to safety and mental health and supports. Over $2 million was invested this school year and ongoing in those areas. And I think that I'm very proud of the of the structures and systems and supports that we've provided. So if you if you aren't able to watch, and if you have it sounds like you have another meeting to go to, either that or so, we can certainly send you the recording. It'll be recorded, and you'll certainly be able to learn and understand what we're doing. And I'm happy to answer any questions after you able to watch that.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson, very much. And thank you to the entire school board for meeting with us tonight, but also for your service to the community. We continue to hear that people move to the community and stay in the community because it's a great place to raise their family. And a huge component of that is the school district. And so hopefully you've been getting that positive feedback as well and hearing that. But we're really grateful for your services. And thank you for taking the time to meet with us.